...in North Hollywood is the latest to break ground in the city of Los Angeles, and it comes at a time when the city and the county are collaborating on ways to build more of them, and more than likely putting the issue before voters. Local leaders break ground on what could be a permanent solution to homelessness. It's more than just housing, it's permanent supportive housing.
We purchased this old motel in the early eighties. Next week, we're tearing it down to rebuild in its place a comprehensive service center, the campus at L.A. Family Housing that will bring new housing, a new primary healthcare clinic.
Stephanie Klaske-Gamer of L.A. Family Housing talking about their soon-to-be-opened campus off Langrisham Boulevard. Fifty new units of permanent supportive housing that includes job placement, health, and addiction services on-site to help ensure tenants are sober, employed, and off the streets for good. Though it may seem uncomfortable to see more of these complexes and their tenants popping up in your neighborhood, Mayor Eric Garcetti urges people to open up their hearts and minds.
And we come out as a voice saying, actually, yes, please put this in my backyard. I'll tell you the concerns that I need, the good architecture I'd like to see, the safety I want to ensure that's there, but yes, bring this to my neighborhood so I don't have to see these people on the streets.
We need to ensure that every part of our city has the resources and the ability to help everyone who finds themselves homeless.
With homelessness up, local leaders are expected to ask us, the voters, to help pay for more housing. Possibilities include a sales tax increase, a housing bond, a millionaire's tax, taxes on marijuana or billboards. Voters could decide on one or more of these issues in November. Meantime, the mayor is urging people to be creative and proactive in housing the homeless. The campus is expected to open in late 2017. In North Hollywood, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Mayor Garcetti has approved $138 million in the upcoming fiscal year to battle homelessness. That's a four-fold increase from the previous year. Well, the city of L.A. is laying down the law on women's health and pregnancy issues. Rasha Goel has more on the steps being taken to ensure women are protected when it comes to their reproductive rights. City officials are working to ensure crisis pregnancy centers follow the law to help women get all the information they need on family planning options.
Here in Los Angeles, we know that waiting for a day, or a week, or a month to enforce this law threatens the health and safety of women who during that time period may not be informed of their choices, may not be given accurate, complete, and timely information.
The law, known as the Reproductive Fact Act, took effect on January 1st and requires licensed facilities providing family planning or pregnancy-related services to notify pregnant women that the state offers free or low-cost access to a variety of family planning services, including prenatal care, abortion, and contraception. Officials say that while some health clinics are reputable, others may not have their patients' best interest in mind.
There are crisis centers, and these crisis centers are often deceptive. They make women believe that there are medical clinics, or that they offer options for women who are pregnant, and they really don't.
But there have been news accounts based on other investigations, other information, where women are told that if you have an abortion, you're more likely to get breast cancer, or if you have an abortion, you may never be able to have kids again.
The city attorney's office recently sent compliance notices to six pregnancy centers in Los Angeles to inform them of the law's requirements. The city attorney also mentioned he had no evidence that any of them have been violating the law.
So we're going to be following up the dissemination of those notices with investigations to assure the law is, in fact, being fully effectuated by these so-called crisis pregnancy centers.
Centers are required to post information about how to access a range of programs.
They can provide the information by posting it, they can give a document to an individual, or they can show it to her digitally.
Pregnancy centers that fail to follow the law could face a $500 fine for the first offense and $1,000 for each subsequent violation. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week. The city attorney encourages pregnant women to contact his office at (213) 978-8340 if they believe they have received inaccurate or incomplete information about their options. While the celebrations for LGBTQ Heritage Month continue, and in Hollywood, a museum exhibit shines the spotlight on the contributions made by the gay and lesbian community in Tinseltown, and Marcos takes us there.
This exhibit truly showed its colors. The reel-to-reel exhibit at the Hollywood Museum marked its third time here, a show that highlights how gays in the LGBT community are portrayed in TV and movies.
I'm an LGBT activist myself, besides being on Child of the Seventies as a LGBT-themed web series, and now it's on Out TV.
The exhibit also featured the work that gays have contributed to the industry, from costume designers to actors to musical artists.
And we hope that you will have a chance to see the Cindy Lauper exhibit this evening. As many of you know, she is a tireless, longtime activist to gay rights movement.
Many here felt this was also a celebration of all gays after the great strides towards equality made by the LGBT community in recent years.
Two years ago, when we opened this exhibit the first time, we did not have nationwide recognition of equality and the freedom to marry. Now it is the law of the land.
Celebrities also came out, including Tony winner and fashion icon Julie Newmar.
When I found out why they invited me to welcome you to the LGBT exhibit, I was told at one point or another, most of you in this room had dressed up as me. I'm touched. You have good taste.
But even with the party atmosphere, community leaders reminded listeners that as the transgender bathroom issue rages, there's still a lot of work to be done in the fight for true equality and acceptance. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
While it sounds like science fiction, a downtown L.A. company is trying to bring public transit near the speed of sound to the world. Gil Reyes reports on the Hyperloop and how it could influence urban planning in Los Angeles.
It's SpaceX founder Elon Musk's futuristic idea for high-speed transit, not by rail, not by road, but on tubes. Inside these vacuum tubes would be capsules, shuttling passengers at 760 miles per hour. Welcome to the future, welcome to Hyperloop.
A lot of people, and rightly so, still think this is a science fiction idea, but actually, we're going to have a full-scale, full-speed prototype running by the end of this year.
Hyperloop One co-founder Brogan Bam-Brogan speaking with other tech innovators at the Milken Global Conference in Beverly Hills. Also on the panel, L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti. He says Hyperloop and other futuristic transport systems like self-driving cars could, for starters, reduce L.A.'s soul-sucking traffic.
We love in L.A. this idea we're going to have freedom trapped in a car moving at three miles an hour. That's not freedom, and I think the moment that, you know, a new generation shows us differently, the way it isn't just about transportation, it's going to free up the way we do urban planning.
He says fewer cars could free up L.A. parking lots for development. The city could build more housing, making the cost of housing more affordable. Hyperloop One is headquartered in downtown L.A.'s Arts District and is one of several companies competing for the privilege of launching Hyperloop, the brainchild of SpaceX and Tesla CEO Elon Musk. Much of the hype over Hyperloop centers on passenger transport, shuttling people from L.A. to San Francisco in 30 minutes. But Bam-Brogan also mentions transporting goods to and from the port of L.A. in record speed.
Now you can maybe double the efficiency of that same port, also making it easier on the local community without the pollution, being unrestricted of right-of-way, so maybe you have less trucks on the road.
The goal is to have a fully operational Hyperloop by 2020. Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Rival companies have differing opinions over the best propulsion system for Hyperloop shuttles. One idea is magnetic levitation, another is air pressure. Well, with the L.A. Rams about to make the L.A. Coliseum their home for a while, officials are talking trash and the effort to keep the waste from piling up. Thousands of L.A. Rams fans are set to flock to the L.A. Coliseum for the highly anticipated football season, and when the game is over, the only thing left will be trash and tons of it. But instead of hauling the trash to the landfills, officials have come up with a game plan. It's called the Zero Waste Program, an effort that seeks to cut the amount of trash that ends up in those landfills.
It's a way for us to really create a more sustainable environment.
Trash company Athens Waste Services, city of L.A., and stadium operator USC will work together to make sure that different kinds of trash is fully recyclable and ready for composting.
We help the recycler, where people do the normal thing. Everything else, we take to one of our plants, we separate all the valuable recyclables, and then if we choose to, we can take them to a facility that'll transfer all of the residual waste into energy.
The Coliseum plans to start using different food packaging materials so that nothing goes to waste.
Those items that we use to package all of the things that you get, your hot dog wrappers, your nacho trays, your condiment boats, all of those things need to be based in a fiber form if we're going to be able to get a benefit out of it.
Officials say recycling bins and other trash containers will be available for fans to dispose their trash, and Athens Waste will take care of the rest. Officials say between seven and 10 tons of trash is generated after each football game. Well, it's the new way to get around town, downtown L.A. to be exact, as Metro gets set to launch its Bike Share program in one of L.A.'s hippest and fastest-growing communities. Gil Reyes has more from downtown.
The very first kiosk in L.A. Metro's Bike Share program, which officially kicks off on Thursday, July 7th. There will be 65 rental kiosks just like this one throughout the downtown L.A. area, all of them conveniently placed at or near transit stops. The point is to get more metro commuters to bicycle instead of drive to and from transit stops and ditch their cars as much as possible.
This is going to be for people who maybe, who don't own a bike already.
It's also for downtown visitors like Elijah Cathaway. He and his pals could rent bikes here after arriving at Union Station, then bicycle and drop them off at 64 other rental kiosks throughout downtown. Kiosks will be located at popular destinations like the Broad Museum, the Arts District, and Chinatown. They'll also sit within walking distance of transit stops, so between riding Metro and cycling, he never has to drive a car. Bike Share passholders pay 20 bucks a month for unlimited half-hour rentals, and starting in August, you can rent at the kiosk by credit card, $3.50 for a half-hour ride.
I think we're at that tipping point in the city of L.A. where, you know, for a long time, it was so car-centric, now we're promoting more alternative forms of transportation, more light rail, more bikes, more pedestrian activity in our streets, and that's a good thing for the environment, it's a good thing for our health, it's a good thing all around to alleviate our roads.
Downtown Councilman Jose Weeza goes on a preview ride. In preparation for Metro Bike Share in July, the city has added protective bike lanes with barriers to shield cyclists on a stretch of Los Angeles Street. More of these protective bike lanes are expected on Main and Spring Streets down the road. In downtown L.A., I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
There will be 1,000 bikes available for rent in the downtown L.A. area starting in July. All 65 kiosks will be open 24 hours a day. Get your Bike Share pass at metro.net/bikeshare. LAPD is going green. The initiative is part of the city's sustainable plan to have more than half of new city vehicles to be fully electric by next year. Rasha Goel has more. Rasha.
Yana, I'm here in downtown Los Angeles where officials have announced the addition of 100 new electric vehicles to the LAPD fleet. Now, these vehicles are being leased for three years, and they cost about $387 a month, which covers their repairs, maintenance costs, and operational costs. Officials also fill us in on why these vehicles will be a huge added benefit for the city and for the LAPD.
They have no internal combustion engine, so they will emit zero pollution, require no gasoline whatsoever. So the air of Los Angeles is cleaned up, and with every single existing LAPD vehicle that we take off the road and replace with one of these electric vehicles, we eliminate tailpipe emissions, reduce greenhouse gas emissions by an estimated 76% overall.
These BMW i3 all-electric plug-in vehicles will be used for certain LAPD functions.
The majority of the cars operated by the Los Angeles Police Department are not black and white patrol vehicles. The majority of our fleet are made for detectives, are used by our civilian, our 3,000 civilian employees, and doing the day-to-day business of the city and the day-to-day policing of the city.
They're not going to be for emergencies or for pursuit.
The cost for leasing the 100 cars is about $1.4 million, with an additional $1.5 million for the infrastructure to charge the BMWs and other electric vehicles purchased in the future.
Normally, we keep the sedans of this class for six years in operation. So what we're looking to do is use the vehicles, the lease is for 36 months, three years, at almost zero cost maintenance and practically zero cost using fossil fuel.
The LAPD's i3 deal could lead to a deal for vehicles more appropriate for patrol work. Police Chief Charlie Beck says the department is continuing to work with BMW, Tesla, and other automakers to create a more capable electric vehicle. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Mayor Eric Garcetti says the city plans to acquire 100 additional electric vehicles this fiscal year. While an oil facility in South L.A. faces more stringent oversight after a lawsuit settlement, honoring the contributions of immigrants in the U.S., and time to make a splash as the summer swim season kicks into high gear, all these stories in City City Attorney Mike Fuer announced that he has secured a court order that puts in place important protections for the South L.A. community and environment in regulating the AllenCo Oil Facility, which according to Fuer, put the health and safety of residents at risk. The court order details specific regulations and further approvals that AllenCo must follow and obtain before it's ever to reopen and begin pumping oil again. AllenCo is also required to provide a state-of-the-art environmental safety monitoring system and pay $1.25 million in civil penalties.
We sued AllenCo to protect the people living in the surrounding community, low-income people, people who very rarely have someone standing up for them.
Councilmember Gil Sadio introduced a resolution designating June as Immigrant Heritage Month, a nationwide effort to gather, share, and celebrate inspirational stories of immigration in the U.S. and the individuals, families, and communities who have contributed to the country's unique social diversity.
We believe here that it's important to create a sense of comfort, a sense of being welcomed, a sense of unity, a sense of solidarity.
The Department of Recreation and Parks Councilmember Curran Price and Bureau of Engineering kicked off the 2016 summer swim season with the reopening of the Central Pool and Kaiser Prominentes Operation Splash Program, which provides swim lessons for children and adults in low-income areas. The central pool at 22nd Street was damaged in the 1994 Northridge earthquake and closed its doors in 2004. Two years ago, it began a multimillion-dollar renovation that now includes a children's splash area.
I'm having such a great time with my daughter, spending time, and it's very, I feel grateful to know that we have programs here for the summer.
While keeping animals at the L.A. Zoo well-fed sometimes requires creative solutions. As Rich Samuels explains, a new collaboration with a local nonprofit is making some animals very happy.
Our non-native plants feed their non-native animals.
The Palisverdes Peninsula Land Conservancy is in the midst of a habitat restoration project, and that means acacia has got to go.
The animals don't use it as much as they would use the local native flora, so they actually block out any other plants from growing underneath them, and they spread pretty rambunctiously.
They're also very flammable, so with the help of a team from AmeriCor, a federally-funded public service organization, the acacia are being removed and replaced with native vegetation. That's good news for native plants and great news for the L.A. Zoo.
The acacia is something that we can use at the zoo to feed to a lot of the different animals. Everything from monkeys on up to giraffes loves to eat acacia.
While the zoo grows some of its own food, it depends on community partnerships like these to meet the demands of zoo residents. In addition to giraffes and monkeys, elephants, antelopes, and a wide range of other animals also enjoy acacia. From the Alta Vicente Reserve in Rancho Palisverdes, this is Rich Samuels for L.A. This Week.
The Habitat Restoration Project is ongoing, which means there's more good eating in store for our friends at the L.A. Zoo. While emerging L.A. artists showcase their work, get up close and personal with the beauty of modern design and a view of the city that'll literally take your breath away. All this and this week's things to do. The Hammer Resim's biannual exhibition series Made in L.A. focuses exclusively on artists from the L.A. region with an emphasis on emerging and under-recognized artists. The Los Angeles Biennial debuts new installations, videos, films, sculptures, performances, and paintings commissioned specifically for the exhibition and offers insight into the current trends and practices coming out of Los Angeles, one of the most active and energetic art communities in the world. The Hammer Resim is located at 10899 Wilshire Boulevard. For more, visit hammer.ucla.edu. It's America's largest modern design event. Dwell on Design is a three-day exhibition and conference comprised of one trade day and two consumer days at the Los Angeles Convention Center, featuring world-class speakers, product demonstrations, continuing education classes for design professionals, and seminars for design-seeking consumers. For more information, visit la.dwellondesign.com. SkySpace L.A. boasts a thrill experience unlike any other. SkySlide, an outdoor glass slide positioned nearly 1,000 feet above downtown L.A. The SkySlide is 45 feet long, approximately four feet wide, and made entirely with 1 and 1/4-inch-thick glass. Visitors will experience SkySlide's unparalleled views in a whole new way as they glide from the 70th to the 69th floor of the U.S. Bank Tower. From interactive and educational components to the spectacular design SkySpace L.A. is the ideal family-friendly attraction and the tallest open-air observation deck. It opens on Saturday, June 25th, and located at 633 West 5th Street. For more, visit skyspace-la.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
You can't control where that ember will land, only what happens when it does. Get Fire Adapted now at fireadapted.org.
If you're in an accident, just stay, call 911, help if you can. You might save someone's life.
Obey the rules of the law.
Don't worry, Patty, this isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Our city, our channel.
Good morning. Good morning. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. If you could please take your seats. Please take your seats. It is Wednesday, June 22, and again, welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
[inaudible] And Martinez, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Carrick, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Ruh, West, and 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Price moves, and Mr. Carrick seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Carrick's moves, and Mr. Price seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, items 1 through 18 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on item number one.
Let's hold that item, and let's proceed. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, continue.
Very good, sir. Items 19 through 41 are items which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items 19 through 21 and 36 through 41 have been submitted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, members, specials. Specials, members? Well, then, Mr. Clerk, let's prepare to vote on these items as well. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That brings us where? Mr. Buscagno.
Ken, I just want to recognize, we just, colleagues, we just approved and confirmed the reappointment of Ambassador Vilma Martinez to the Board of Harbor Commissioners. Ambassador, thank you for taking on this role one more time. We recognize your commitment and leadership in moving America's number-one seaport forward, and at the same time, your commitment to moving on the L.A. waterfront redevelopment. We thank you for your commitment and look forward to serving alongside you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's give her a round of applause for her service to the great city of Los Angeles. Okay, let's continue, Mr. Clerk.
Very good, sir. Items 42 through 49 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body? Do we have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on items 42, 43, 44, 45, 48, and 49. That leaves 46 and 47 before you.
Okay, let's hold those items, and let's do the two items that we can vote on. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Price.
Mr. President, items 24, 25, forthwith, please.
Without objection.
24.
24 and 25. It's a little early to go into special.
Mr. President, at this point, would you like to reconsider the ordinances for 12 members?
Okay, let's identify the ordinances.
Very good, sir. Those would be items 2 through 12.
Okay, let's open the roll.
Excuse me, and 21 and 22.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now let's actually vote on the items. Let's open the roll, close the rolls, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to presentations, or items called special.
I'd like to see if Mr. Englander is ready with his presentation, a very, very important presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. Today is a little bittersweet, actually, as one of our great ones will be departing service. But I'm proud to honor our first Assistant Chief, Earl C. Pasinger, for his 41-year
All right.
41-year career with the Los Angeles Police Department. Which means that he began his career in 1974 as an LAPD police student worker. Let me give you an idea of what that means and put it in a perspective for a moment. The average cost of a new house here in Los Angeles was $34,000. I think that's what you make an hour now, right? That's the mic on? The cost, the average rent was about $185. The cost of gas was 55 cents a gallon. The average cost of a new car was $3,700. And the speed limit in the nation had just passed, because we didn't have one before that, to 55 miles an hour. Films were Herbie Rides Again, Blazing Saddles, The Great Gas.
Was that Herbie Rides Again?
Herbie Rides Again. That was Herbie Rides Again. That's what we say every time we see you drive off, Mr. President. Murder on the Orient Express, and we had popular music and songs, The Beach Boys, David Bowie, The Carpenters, Dolly Parton, of course, Eric Clapton, I Shot the Sheriff just came out. Popular TV programs were Kung Fu, The Waltons, Kojak, The Six Million Dollar Man, which also is his nickname in the Los Angeles Police Department. 1974 is when the Dodgers lost to the Oakland Athletics in the World Series, and the lineup was none other than Rick Auerbach, Jim Brewer, Ron Say, Willie. Well, you get the idea. This was a long time ago. In fact, I was just starting off my career at the same time in kindergarten. So with that, with that, he then, in 1976, young Pasinger then took his formal oath of office to become a sworn member of the Police Department. Now, why is that relevant today? We just happen to be voting on today, chief, on-body cameras for the Los Angeles Police Department. And 1976 is when the Polaroid camera was invented, when he took his oath of office. Just putting things into perspective, sir. Chief Pasinger has served in many leadership roles, overseeing the Detective Bureau, overseeing the Counterterrorism, Special Operations Bureau, Director of the Office of Operations, Deputy Chief in Charge of the South Bureau, LAPD's Employee Relations Administrator, Department Commander, Commanding Officer of Newton, Commanding Officer of the Drug Abuse Resistance Education Division, and but wait, there's more. Served for nearly a decade as the Director of Operations during the administrations of both Chief Bratton and Chief Beck, during which time he supervised over 7,500 LAPD sworn and civilian personnel. He is the longest-serving and most prolific operations executive in modern era of the Los Angeles Police Department. Chief Pasinger was the architect of the highly-successful Youth First Initiative campaign designed to advance accomplishments of the youth majority throughout the city of Los Angeles. And in fact, he completely revamped the cadet leadership program. And if one of you haven't been to the Galen Center at USC, you're still hosting them there every year.
Yeah.
If you haven't been there, it's absolutely breathtaking. This was a program within the department that had roughly 400, 450 participants every year. They loved it. That was a success, not according to Earl. He took it over. They now have 8,000. Turning lives around. It also has a 91% graduation rate, and it's just incredible. During his, that graduate high school, during the tenure, his tenure at the helm of LAPD South Bureau, Chief Pasinger was instrumental in helping to restore the department's relationship with communities of color through South Los Angeles, and has done so much more. He's worked diligently to develop community coalitions and strengthen bonds with community members, civic groups, faith-based organizations. He helped develop what we have today, known as a worldwide model, copied, replicated, duplicated, community policing, that he helped create, establish, perfect, and bring worldwide. Throughout his career, Chief Pasinger has helped shepherd the department through so many of our most difficult times, economic periods throughout history. He's always spoke with purpose and integrity, encouraged meaningful dialogue between the Los Angeles Police Department and the public. And I can go on and on. I want to say on a personal note, chief, and what I've seen you do with Grid and so many other programs, is everything you have touched hasn't just perfected within the Los Angeles Police Department. What you've done is you created models that will last generationaly. Models, concepts, ideas that people talk about in every city, in every county, in every state in the United States. I serve on the National League of Cities Public Safety Committee. We get together regularly, and they talk about the programs that Earl Pasinger created. They talk about it from Nebraska and Wyoming, Utah, to New York. He's a living legend. And few and far between you ever cross in your life that have touched so many, perfected so many, changed the lives of so many, brought so many up from the bootstraps and turned their lives around, and you don't think about that. You think about that with teachers and professors, faith-based leaders, many that wear this badge. They wear it in honor because of people like Earl Pasinger. So I want to say I'm proud, I'm honored to have worked, to serve, to have known you, and to have you represent us and so many for so long. Thank you so much. Now, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Joe Buscagno, and then our city attorney after that. Thank you, Mitch. To Chief Pasinger, we wish you the best on your retirement. We are going to miss you here in the city of Los Angeles. I had the privilege to serve under Chief Pasinger's direction, working Operation South Bureau, assigned to the harbor. And Chief Pasinger really, as Mitch indicated, embraced community-based policing and its basic tenets of creating partnerships, doing everything we can do as a police department to problem-solve, and also to prevent crimes in the beginning. And I've learned a great deal. You've been one of my mentors in the LAPD, and every time one of our recent graduates of the Police Academy that went through the Police Cadet Program come up to me and say, "Hey, Joe, I just graduated from the Police Academy," I tell them, "Thank Chief Pasinger." He has embraced and brought in thousands of young men and women into the department, introduced them to the men and women. Many police officers mentored our cadets, and we owe a debt of gratitude to you, chief, for leading the cadet program today. On a side note, we are proud that chief reigns from Harbor City. He is a proud Narbon Gaucho, and you make us, continue to make us proud on representing the Harbor City area, chief. We thank you so much for your commitment and leadership and dedication to serving the city and also its police department. God bless you, and best of luck as you move forward. Love you. Let me help us welcome our city attorney, Mike Fuer.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. President, members, I wanted to be here today because I've had such a long and really productive history with Chief Pasinger. We go back to my first days on the city council 21 years ago. And in every year since, I've found Chief Pasinger to be always unflinchingly candid and direct, and extremely, in a very positive way. Really important to be able to hear it straight. And Chief Pasinger is known for saying what he means, and that has advanced our relationship and the Police Department for his entire career. He's tough, he's smart, he's knowledgeable, he is deeply respected by all who come in contact with him. As has been mentioned, he has shaped so many of the most important innovations in the Police Department, and has always been, I think, viewed by the communities he serves, as well as by the officials with whom he serves, as someone who's both a source of innovation and someone who knows how to implement steps and get things done. So, Chief Pasinger, it will be a pleasure to be able to join with all who are standing here in congratulating you on a remarkable career. And I still have your cell phone number, so be just a little bit afraid about that as we move forward. It's been wonderful serving with you. Thank you.
Now, before I turn it over to the chief to say some remarks, I gotta, I gotta get this picture real quick. Here, hold your arm up there, right there. Look at that.
Look at that.
These are, these are, these are well-deserved battle scars that indicate five years of service on each hash mark. And you will rarely, rarely in your lifetime.
There's eight of them.
Ever see that many on one individual. So it's a good thing you have long arms. So, chief.
Now, you know what, Mr. Englander? Before we hear from the chief, I'd like to recognize several, several members of the council. Given how, I think you tried to age the chief, given the members that I have on the queue, maybe somebody wants to bring him a chair to sit down. But I know he's more spry than that. But I want to start off with Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you, sir, Mr. President, and thank you, my colleagues, Mr. Englander and Mr. Buscagno, for bringing this wonderful celebration to us today. There are so many positive things to say about you, Earl. We met certainly when I was an activist and, you know, part of groups that were mostly critical of the Police Department. And no matter what room it was, what neighborhood it was, or how sharp the criticism, Earl could walk in the room, sit down, have a discussion, talk it out, and leave on good terms, make sure everybody had his cell phone number. And it was really accessible to South L.A. at a time when LAPD had probably the most challenging relationship with the Police Department, and really, I thought, held up the banner in a way that almost no one else could have. And so I just want to, again, thank you for everything. Thank you for being a mentor to me. I'm still a little bit salty. He called me on the day after election and said, "Congratulations on winning. I'm retiring." So I just want to thank you for the mentor that you've been to me, but to so many in the community, teaching us what we can build together when we talk it out, struggle it out, and have the kind of long-lasting bonds, and demonstrating that police can become part of community and remain part of the community. So just FYI, I'm not telling anybody in the district that you retired, so everybody that has your cell phone numbers will still be calling you.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too just wanted to join my colleagues and wishing goodbye to the chief. You know, and you really are, have been a real positive role model in the department and in the community, and have always appreciated your accessibility, your willingness to step out there, if you will. And so we appreciate your combined leadership, and also excited about your focus on the youth, how that's always been a priority for you. And I think it's helped lay groundwork for a lot of the success we've had over the years. So you're going to be missed sorely. I know that, you know, you've got some additional creative ventures in you, and so we're all going to be excited to know what those are going to be. But continued success in all your endeavors, chief. We love you. Congratulations.
Mr. Sadio.
Chief, I, this is unexpected. I wasn't planning on this when I got up this morning. But let me just say thank you. Thank you for being a friend. Thank you for being the great professional that you are. Let me say that, we like to say in our office that leadership is not about title, but it's about influence. And you have been an incredible leader in the city with incredible influence. And I think it's difficult for people to distinguish between your friendship and your professionalism, and I think that makes you the consummate professional and the consummate leader that you've been. I just wish you well, and I thank you for the years of friendship. I could always rely on you. It was interesting seeing you yesterday because it was unexpected. I saw you, something was going on, and it just brought great comfort and confidence to see you when I did. Thank you so much. God bless.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Pasinger, you are of the magnitude with your stellar character that your incredible reputation has always preceded you like no other. Even before I met you, I heard what a great individual you were, much less visionary leader with the LAPD. I think you are the definition of professionalism, of generosity, of enlightened thought, and of grace. And I just also want to thank you. And behind all of that is an incredible toughness that maybe a lot of people don't appreciate, but all of your colleagues know to the core. And I think you have just done the department extremely proud, and by extension, the entire city of Los Angeles very proud with your 41 years of service, and I rise to thank you for that also. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, chief, and thank you so much. I think whenever I've dealt with you on several issues, if you've come to council to work with us on several issues, you've always come forward with passion, sincerity, and you've cared a lot of you've cared a lot about the LAPD and this city. And so we thank you for that. That caring goes a long, long way. And I think every adjective has been used to describe you already, but they forgot to say you're also very good-looking, too. So thank you very much, and that goes a long way, too, here. So thank you so much. Chief, at the end of the day, when we've had some troubled times here, I think when you've come and you sat at that table and you talked to this council, and you've talked to the public, it's calmed everyone down. Because that caring that you bring with you, that sincerity, has got a long way to show that we're going to respond in a way that makes sense for all of us. So thank you for that. You've done a whole lot of good in this city, and we could never repay you for that. But someone like you has saved thousands of lives, has made this a better city because of your work. So thank you so much.
Now, as Mr. Englander chief was taking us down a trip on memory lane when he referred to gas prices being 55 cent and movies that were hot at the time, one thing that he neglected is that when the chief started, it was not an easy time to be a minority on the Los Angeles Police Department. It wasn't a easy to be a minority, period. He had to come to work maybe a little earlier than others, stay a little late, do extra things to work his way up through the ranks. I'm sure that he had to listen and hear things that were not respectful, but he carried himself with class, style, and elegance. And you have done that every day that I have known you. You have been an example to any and everyone as to what a police officer should be, what one should be as a leader, and what one should be as a chief. You have been my personal friend for a very long time. I have always treasured your counsel, and from the bottom of my heart, and on behalf of the citizens or the residents that can't be here today, we want to thank you for your service and all that you've gone through for the residents of the city of Los Angeles. Let's recognize the chief, give him the round of applause that he deserves.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Mr. President, councilmembers that were present, you know, actually, I do appreciate the honor, the recognition, the, this very, very nice proclamation. I was actually kind of expecting a Bentley.
It's on order.
After 41 years. The councilmember spoke about my story. Many of you know it. It's, it's fairly simple. Born and raised here in the city, Harbor City, educated in Los Angeles City Schools. Know you find this hard to believe, I was a senior class president in high school. Was a pretty good student, was a better athlete. And as Councilmember Englander said, I started with the LAPD in December 1974, December 16th, to be exact. Took my oath in 1976, and I have been employed in uninterrupted service with the LAPD for 15,172 days.
Who's counting? That's ComStat.
That's ComStat material. You know, Mitch, actually, he stole some of my lines, because I was gonna...
I see that.
Yeah, see, I got the same...
Great mind.
When I started, I, the first LAPD car that I got into was a 1973 AMC Matador. It's a collector's item today. 400 horsepower V8 engine, didn't have air conditioning, none of them did back in the day. It had a wind wing. Some of you may remember wind wings in cars. No power steering. The phrase "rolling up the window." You actually had to...
With vise grips.
Yeah. Executive Director of the Police Commission, Richard Tefan, he remembers those days. Even beyond that, there was no southeast, there was no Olympic, there was no Topanga. And the old LAPD PAB was only 20 years old. State-of-the-art building at that time. Then it was policy for us, every time we got out of a black and white, to put on our hat, because it was a symbol of professionalism. I still wear that hat today. Back then, it was a little annoying because I had a little Afro going on. My time with the LAPD actually has been quite extraordinary, and the sacrifice that I've given to the city over that time has never been betrayed by the people. As a matter of fact, I have gotten back far more than I actually deserve. It's not been easy, some of those years, some of the political, socioeconomic issues that we have, all of us have gone through during those times, those are tough times. And at times, both in this body and also the community, we, the LAPD, my colleagues and I who are here, and thank you for being here, by the way, sometimes we've been the subject of rebuke. But on every single occasion, the people have supported us. You believed in us. And I'm particularly grateful that during that time, all of you have believed in me. Thank you.
Well said. For a little gay guy, well said.
So on behalf of not just us, chief, although everybody has signed this, including the mayor, on behalf of not just the 4 million residents here in Los Angeles, but the ones that have lived here, have traveled here, have worked here, have visited here, have driven through here, have all been impacted over the last 41 years by you, on behalf of all of us, we thank you for your commitment and service.
Members, let's take a 93-second recess so that we can do a photo with the chief at the center table. Mr. Price?
Thank you.
So I just wanted you to see that. Yeah, no, great.
Lock your hand.
Okay, so give you a photo.
And also, I'm not, I'm not going to back down.
Bloomfield, Bonn, Buscagno, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris-Dawson, Weeza, Kresk, Corian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Fifteen members present, sir.
Okay, and we have one item before us?
Yes, sir, that's Item 50. It's an item for which a public hearing has been held. A committee report for Item 50 has been submitted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, is there any additional business in the special?
No, sir.
Then let's adjourn the special, return to the regular.
Very good, sir. Mr. President, there's been a request to send Items 37 and 41 forthwith.
Without objection. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Previn, Ms. Ramirez. Item 42.
Hello, hello, sir. It's Eric Previn from CD2 on Item 42, but did you just approve Item 50?
Would you stay on this item? This is Item 42.
Right, the appointment of Richard Barron, reapportment of him, is that correct? That is correct. Okay, Barron is a longtime cultural affairs guy. Barron and I used to enjoy Item 50 in the day, but now what we enjoy is cultural historical commission service. But, but we really, sir, do need to bring a discussion forward on Item 50 from that side.
Thank you. Your time's expired. You're off topic. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, logging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or at JWalshConfidential, tweeting at HollywoodDems. This, the City Ethics Commission is, is a joke. That's like the non-sexual freedom commission. Richard E. Barron, to the Cultural Heritage Commission. I'm number one thing here. I want to make sure that you don't put any more people with kiddie porn who are arrested, who are still in prison. You voted unanimously for someone on, put in kiddie porn and LA City, you'll find it. But we've checked out Mr. Richard Barron, and it appears that he has no record of possession of kiddie porn, so we support him.
Ms. Ramirez.
You've already, thank you very much. Mr. Richard E. Barron, I hope that once you are reappointed for this Cultural Heritage Commission, may you be impartial, objective, prudent, fair, and with deep integrity. Now, I'm not, I have not heard really anything going on in the Cultural Heritage Commission, but I sure hope you teach about the American culture. We need people to learn about the American cultures. We have a lot of catatonic twit Americans, especially Third World ghettos coming in. They do not know anything about the American culture. That is shameful, because we live in America. Why are we going to first study other cultures before our own? We must, we must teach them the beauty of America, the freedoms, the life, the liberty, and the greatness and the innovation of America. That's what made America great. That's why so much hemorrhage has been done to this country, because so many have killed and died for this country, because they wanted to pass down that beautiful heritage that many never got to see. So therefore, again, let us remind and be reminded of our wonderful cultural, of our military troops. They are part of this cultural heritage. Bring America awareness. America, this is truly the greatest country. No one can do what they want to do in any other country. You get, you get your limbs cut off, tongues cut off, you get killed or chopped limbs cut off, tongues cut off, you get killed or chopped up in the desert, not in America. You get the worst, they'll put you on the streets, like I am, living on the streets. So please, I ask you, Mr. Barron, if you have any human dignity, if you appreciate this country, start with America, teach the basics, morals, values, greatness, and legendaries. Thank you, God bless Donald Trump!
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Let's move to forty-three, Mr. Walsh and Ms. Ramirez, item forty-three.
Minute two, John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential. This is rent escrow account program, and as I said, when you do a good job, I'm the first to praise you. I'm not praising you about security in this building, but I am praising you about what a good job you do on rent escrow and on tenant relationships. And the father of rent control is Tom Bradley, so 100% in your favor, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Ms. Ramirez?
Thank you very much. Under the rent escrow account program, I see now that it's, the list has gotten shortened. We want to thank city attorney for actually doing their work. The list used to be pages, it is now shortened quite a bit drastically. So there's been action, whether it's positive or negative, I do not know, and nor do I have the time. But thing that I would like to see more focus, and again, thank God for the code enforcement unit, they're great, and again, they spend a lot of time playing cat and mouse games against these goddamn gangbangers and wetbacks, Django shit, you know? And what I would like to see is that we focus on tenant harassment, tenant harassment by these third-world ghetto M.O.S.O.B.s. Again, we need to focus that so we can avoid putting many on the streets. And I know Gil Sodio should be the first one living on the street or floating down the L.A. river, but that's beside the point. But thank you so very much, and again, gentlemen, let's do our work. City Attorney, I congratulate you for doing your job on this one, really, thank you. And again, let's try to keep people in their homes, let us not add to the homelessness, but at the same time, if they are causing problems, they are causing habitability problems and violating a peaceful, quiet enjoyment for others, then put them in the pokey, fry their asses, or send them to Guantanamo Bay, period, no bots. So many good people do not end up on the streets, which is usually the case. Many of the law enforcement back then, and city attorneys, do not prosecute the tenant harassers. Stop harassing the tenants, the good, law-abiding tenants, and prosecute those SOBs, junkies, white trash, wetbacks, gangbangers, and black thugs. And let's vote.
Get on the subject.
And again, and I think if we vote for Donald Trump, he certainly will rectify the problem.
Okay, you're off the subject, thank you. Let's open the roll, let's close, let's open the roll, let's close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, we'll go to item forty-nine. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Previn, Ms. Ramirez.
And, Mr. President, amending motion forty-nine A has been submitted and circulated for council's consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Previn, Ms. Ramirez.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential. What this is, is a change, transfer of floor area rights. This is complex, but what this is doing is, city council, all fifteen of you plus the mayor, are bending over, grabbing your ankles, and letting yourself get fucked up the ass by a developer.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Yesterday morning, we were speaking at Public Safety regarding the body worn cameras for officers. I was pretty much denied the right, I was denied the right to speak on this subject by Mitchell Englander. Thank you.
Get on the subject, Ms. Ramirez, item forty-nine.
Okay, regarding the police department's plan to use this body, I am for it. There are good officers, and I've been coming here, thirty-nine.
Okay, no, forty-nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, forgive me, I thought, thirty-nine. I'm sorry, I didn't, okay, I see that, forgive me, I apologize. Floor rights, boy, this one's a good one. Real estate law and real estate taxes are extremely difficult and complex. So what I would ask the city is to summarize, the city and the city attorneys, summarize all these benefits and transfer payments and tax benefits and all that, so the layman people like me and others can understand it. It would make it a lot easier.
Thank you. Mr. Previn, were you gonna speak on this item? Mr. Herman, you're disrupting the meeting. I said, Mr. Previn, I didn't have a...
Thank you, sir, it is Eric Previn, at a slight disadvantage here, only in the sense that this is item forty-nine, and as you know, it is followed by numerical item.
Okay, you're being cute, Mr. Previn, you don't want to speak on this item? Thank you, your time's expired.
Hold on, sir, you know that I understand what you're talking about.
No, no, don't, you know that the item is item forty-nine, speak to forty-nine.
Okay, sir, in protest, I'm not going to speak to forty-nine. I'm not going to speak to it in protest.
Okay, that's fine. Mr. Herman, if I hear the bell again, it'll be removed, and you can be removed with it. You know you've been warned not to bring that bell. And I do not have a card on you on this item, so please sit down. Wait, what did you say? You can, are you disrupting this meeting? Mr. Herman, disrupting the meeting? Last warning, no, last warning. Let's open, Mr. Blumenfield.
I wanted to put thirty-six forth with.
No, without objection, so ordered. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Mr. Clerk, what item is our closed session item?
Mr. President, that would be item fifty-one.
Okay, Mr. Coretts, Mr. Coretts.
I'd just like to ask that item forty-nine go forth with as well.
Without objection. Sergeants, we're gonna go into closed session. Okay, Mr. Previn, on item fifty-one.
And, Mr. President, motion fifty-one A has been submitted and circulated for council's consideration.
No, wait.
Sir, it's Eric Previn from the Second District, and let's, they're fine, they're fine, sir.
Hold your time, hold his time, hold your time. Last warning. Mr. Previn, continue.
Okay, sir, this is item fifty-one. This is a, an item that follows expressly. And it is an item in which one has the feeling that you, sir, the council president, are sort of arranging the Public Works Commission in an expert fashion. I must say that the eyes of all labor and everybody are kind of on this page because there's a subtle shift in the way the ultimate control will play out, and I'm gonna explain it in one second since I do have a minute here, which is, basically, you have agreed that the picks from the commission are going to be permitted to create, and I hope you're following on this, three picks themselves. Okay, so that's going to create a pond of three. The mayor, who is excellent, by the way, and did a selfie with a body cam some time ago with Englander, I liked it, he, sir, is going to pick, and this is true, up to three selections to go into the pond of names. Now, up to three is where the gentle hand of Herb Wesson can be revealed. The expert, I must say, expert, sophisticated, almost like a game of cards that some of us don't even know how to play. So, in the same week in which Mr. Rendon from the State Assembly and the others were down here, this is a great, this is a great celebration. It's a celebration of the day in which we're going to hopefully reconsider item fifty and give the public a chance to speak on a special meeting.
Thank you, your time's expired, you're off subject. Okay, sergeants, if we could clear the chambers, we're gonna go into closed session.
All right, welcome back to City Council. We are in open session and we're gonna go ahead and ask the city attorney to read something into the record. Thank you.
We would, this is Harith Tredy from the city attorney's office on item 51. To come back with corrected language, we would need a motion directing us to amend proposed section 1025a3 to read instead of shall, may conduct periodic audits of any alternative standards adopted pursuant to this section.
Okay.
We can come back with that language on Friday.
Okay, so we're gonna ask the city attorney, we're gonna actually go to, go ahead and vote on that language to ask the city attorney to then come back with that language on Friday. Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the roll on that, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, then that matter will be carried and continued until Friday. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President, for the record, Friday is June 24.
Thank you, Keeper of Time. Item one, Mr. Wayne Spindler?
And we have to be very quiet today because of the property liens. Six or seven detectives were brought over here to observe the meeting, so we have to be busy on these liens. So if you have a lien, there's a secret that you have to know on all these liens. If you go to your councilman first, you can reduce your lien by 50%. You can get half off, like when you go to, like when you go to Pizza Hut.
All right, so since you're not speaking and you're, and you're just wasting the council's time, therefore you're not speaking on the item, we're gonna go ahead and discontinue your time if you keep that up, Mr. Spindler. It's disrupting the meeting. Armando Herman? Armando?
Good morning. As you've heard for the record, these hearings of protests are unconstitutional. They violate every and anyone's right to protest and hold, and hold a fair hearing on due process, something that the chair is not too familiar with, due process. So the item A 160170 S SOX 27, demanding that the airport van rentals INC., not FBI, but INC., lien, L-I-E-N, for the $1.0731.70, meaning, city attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a substantial amount of $10,000, and if you rough it out and round it off, you could say it's $11,000. But in the Plum meeting yesterday, all these liens were put on hold. They were suppressed. Ask Jose Weezer, as I sat in on the Plum meeting. No more liens, no more liens, no more liens. So when it comes to recording liens, come to City Hall, come here and protest, win yourself some time to delegate on your behalf how to pay the lien back in increments, percentage, and more so, survive the lien capital of the world, LA, who has made the criteria of crisis on liens a homeless issue. Fuck that!
John Walsh. Followed by Eric Previn.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org for J. Walsh confidence.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. You know, I'm not someone who gets a bunch of crooks, you're all a bunch of crooks. When you do a good job, I say you do a good job. And on liens, you do a good job. When you make a mistake, someone comes up here, we talk to them, and it's taken off the calendar and the lien is erased. We've erased, we've helped property owners erase hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars in loans. Thank you for doing a good job on this issue.
Yes, thank you, it is Eric Previn, apparently with only one minute, but fair enough. I don't need that much time on item one, which is the Office of Finance, Mr. Englander, and this is a group that I know you have a facility with. Claire Bartels is the current chief, Mr. Price. She oversees the finances and the taxation assessments of the various, for example, the transit occupancy tax, the, there are a lot of different kind, parking occupancy taxes. Here we have a couple of groups that have gone off the rails a little bit and fell short. So what we're requesting, oh, there's Stephanie Saprito behind the computer, hi Stephanie. She's, what we got here is a couple of liens of 10,000 against one guy, Airport Van Rendell, and 28,000 against Galen and Davis. Now, I would just ask that, Galen and Davis are attorneys, I believe LLP ordinarily stands. Mr. O'Donnell, O'Connell, sir, are you willing to work with them cooperatively in any manner? Just because they, they do like to work things out cooperatively. So thank you so much.
Having no other cards on this item, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item 44. John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. We had one of these the other day, exemption for someone they want to hire from the civil service provisions of the city charter. In other words, this person is not qualified for the job under the law. So what did these scumbags up here do? And I don't, I'm not mentioning...
Stay on the item, please, you're not on the item, Mr. Walsh, stay on the item.
...is why is this person exempt? Why is he, why is a man or woman exempt? Why do you want him in here? And what the fuck use is the city charter when you exempt him for your fucking friends, you fucking scumbag?
All right, thank you very much, very poetic. And you were a schoolteacher at once, I understand. Ms. Antonia Ramirez. But you're out of time, never mind. All right, Armando Herman, Armando?
For one minute, one minute only, one minute. This deals with various properties for the Bureau of Street Services by exemption. I'm not going to give the pony show that you all expect to hear and see. I don't have time like Eric Garcetti to be in China, not delegating the business on behalf of all of you. So Hollywood Highland, John Walsh is correct. I reserve my time and I honor you back, Mr. Chair. Thank you for being so cooperative today.
All right, you're off topic, thank you very much. Thank you. Wayne, Mr. Spindler. Stick to the item, Mr. Spindler.
Okay, like little kids?
Speak, speak, speak to the item and not in a baby voice. Speak to the item clearly so we can understand it or you're wasting this council's time.
The Bureau of Street Services requested the exemption of an assistant director in accordance with Charter Section 1001B from Civil Services Management Professional Scientific or Expert Services Charter.
Mr. Spindler, if you're not going to speak to the item and speak clearly as you know how and do often and always regularly, every single day and every single committee meeting, then you're wasting this council's time and you're disrupting this meeting. That'll be your final warning. If you don't want to speak at all, then you're disrupting this meeting as well if you're just going to stand there and burn the clock. So it's up to you, whatever you want to do. Okay, thank you very much, then your time is up. And that ate into your other minute as well, so that's gone. Thank you so much. All righty. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Let's go on to item 45. Armando?
Forty-five, CD seven, Mr. Felipe Fuentes and Mr. Bloomfield. Under the ADA with persons with disability, I'd like to bring to the attention about the Los Angeles Police Department, known as LAPD, to deploy a car detail and foothill admission division. Now, why are we supplying car detail when we have money to be used to help the homeless to detail them in a better lifestyle? But the city clerk here has placed on console on the agenda for July 1st, as soon as possible, and thereafter is the jargon of the language, the following recommendations of adoption. But due to my disability, I'm going to calm it down now and go into Mr. B mode for the record.
I would like to transfer $40,000 to Mr. Lopez Canyon Landfill Community Amenities, the Fund Number 531-14 account. You see, in which $20,000, big two, zero, thousand dollars will be appropriated to the S, I mean, LAPD foothill. I tend to forget things quite often because like a non-disabled person and a disabled person, we have protected individual rights in society called title to discrimination.
All right, thank you very much, you're off topic, your time's done. Thank you so much. Thank you. Now, you're wasting the council's time, thank you very much. Thank you, you're done. Thank you. No, I'm not going to warn you every time you get up that you're off topic, when you're off topic. So, thank you. All right, Spindler?
And I'm sorry about my voice, I've been losing my voice, but I tried to come and talk about this item and I lost my voice because I am under threat of arrest all the time in the building, so I just want to say that in CD 14, there's a lot of transfers of money illegally and I need to get that on the record, that they're bringing in all these people threatening me with criminal prosecution.
He's not talking about item 45. All right, thank you, you're out of time. You're off topic, you're out of time, thank you very much. All right, Oscar Mohammed?
But I see, well, our peoples have power in their position, they abuse their position. I see where the chief of police, they have asked for funding for the Los Angeles Police to deport the car detailing foothill mission division, and they're asking for $40,000 to for, for Lopez Canyon landfill community. And do the people of the city of foothill, do they have anything to say in their government and which way their government going? I know the taxpayer in Los Angeles won't have anything to say which way the police do things, but seem like the police, when they just do things mostly to benefit the policeman and they don't have any one to have to check what they're doing. And many times they're abusing their, they're abusing their authorities and they're putting down so much work they haven't been accountable for. And we have a grossly mismanagement of revenues today.
All right, thank you very much, go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you very much, next item, please.
That brings us to 48, called Special for Cards.
Okay, and those are out of time, so we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, thank you very much, where does that take us?
Mr. President takes counsel to general public comment.
Great, thank you very much. We're going to jump into general public comment. For those who wish to speak on general public comment, I want to remind everybody that if you filled out a speaker card for general public comment, you will be speaking about items that were not before this body on the agenda. Any other item that's under the purview of this council only and not on the agenda of today's council agenda, because those were specifically either already met or, so the council rules are, they're already satisfied or they had public comment. Excuse me, if you're going to yell out, then you're disrupting the meeting, we're going to ask you to step out. If you speak to any items that are either not under the purview of this body or that were on the council agenda today, then your time will be up as well. But you can speak to any matter that is actually under the purview of this body as well. All right, Mr. Walsh? And we're going to ask that you don't applaud, yell out, boo or hiss, just keep it down so we can get through the agenda, thank you very much. Thanks for following the rules.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. I want to point out what's on the front page news of the LA Daily News. You have antiquated security here, that's the word antiquated. You spend millions, tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars, and you have metal detectors that do not work.
If you yell out to the microphone one more time, you're going to forfeit your time.
See, that's what he's interested in, my volume. I'm telling you right now, we're all in danger. Ms. Martinez says she's on the front page of the Times, that she says she doesn't feel safe here because somebody can come in here and smuggle in a knife blade and this piece of fucking shit, Englander, is interested in I'm too loud. I'm telling you right now, anybody may have a gun in this building. You have an antiquated system of metal detector, antiquated, and the Times doesn't give a shit because...
All right. Hamid Khan? Followed by Jamie Garcia? Followed by Pastor Q?
Hello, my name is Hamid Khan with the Stop LAPD Spying Coalition. Yesterday, we saw a mockery of due process being made under the leadership of Mr. Mitch Englander when we had gone in to speak at the Public Safety Committee where we were given one minute, one minute to speak on four agenda items. It's very important for this body to see that what you're doing is that you're rubber stamping the expansion of the surveillance state. What we have here is a whole roundup of what's going on on human intelligence gathering and electronic technology that is being used, from license plate readers to high-definition cameras, to digital receiver technology, to stingray technology, to drones, to various other pieces that are in operation right now. Then you have the suspicious activity reporting program, the iWatch program, the intelligence gathering guidelines, and this is, this is a crude makeup because we use this to street organize and inform our communities how vast this surveillance state is. And yesterday, when we wanted to speak out...
Great, thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Jamie Garcia? Sir, now you're disrupting this meeting. Thank you very much. Jamie, sir, you're still disrupting this meeting. Sir, we're going to ask you to step out of council chambers if you want to continue to yell out. If you can all, you can, you can all come up at the same time if you'd like. Jamie Garcia, followed by, once again, Pastor Q, by Oscar Mohammed? Yes, thank you. Go ahead, ma'am, thank you very much.
So I don't see why it's important for me to rush into this council to save time for you when you don't even consider the time that's needed for the community to speak about very important issues. Again, I was mentioned how Englander handled the issue yesterday where we had four items and we only were given one minute to talk about it. So let's be very clear about body cameras. Body cameras are for cops, by cops, as VVIEW has stated in their catchphrase for body cameras. This program is fundamentally flawed by design because it's about protecting the department and the city from liability. This is not about exposing the violence of policing nor accountability. And first, and first of all, there is no trust with LAPD. We saw in a reform with digital, with in-car video, in-car video systems, that police officers actually broke antennas off these, off their vehicles in order to protect themselves from any kind of footage being uploaded. So we have to think about when body cameras and footage is being covered by their arms or when they're seeing these videos before they actually make their reports, that they're actually protecting themselves and that there'll be no investigation because...
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, ma'am, your time is up. Excuse me, ma'am, your time is up. So we're going to ask that sergeants, if you can ask, please, your time is up.
She is disrupting the meeting.
You're disrupting this meeting. All right, if you're going to continue to disrupt the meeting, ma'am, then we'll ask you to leave the council chambers. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, thanks for being here.
Pastor Q, Black Jewish Justice Alliance. I'm reminded of a story in the scriptures where David's son raped his daughter and she had to live in that house with her brother who had raped her. And she was living in a sense, because it was a misogynist society, David never really addressed her situation. And I feel like with these body cameras, I'm asking myself, when do we get our accountability apparatus? Because it seems like the police controls all the body cameras, they control the footage as in the community, I pastor in Skid Row, we never got any footage for the Charlie Africa shooting. What are you, what are they going to do with the footage? And the communities that are most affected never gets, feel like we're getting any accountability. It seems like it's another apparatus for them to continue this surveillance that they've been doing in our communities. Who is this stuff really going to affect? It's not going to affect the people who are voting for it, I'm sure.
Thank you. Jacqueline Richardson? Followed by Yvonne Autry? And Rabbi Cohen? Good afternoon.
Some black men have, and other men have trouble on jobs because women of all races get after them real quick. They get after them also for GR checks, SSI checks and job checks. At General Hospital, one black man who was trying to train me said the women kept offering him stuff. And when he left in the evening, he got out of there real fast. At another job, one white woman got after a married white man. She asked him to lunch, when he came back, he didn't look well. Other women at the same place get after men of all races. The men have to watch out to keep from getting in trouble with them. Also... Also, preachers of all races have women after them. Some black men have women sending them notes up into the pulpit. Preacher, a pastor, take me home. The question is, how can men handle these assaults against them so they can go to work and, and, uh, be free?
Thank you very much.
Yes, first of all, for the record, I object because you reduce our time and you arrest those who speak over the one-minute limit. Secondly, I'd also like to discourage the use of body cameras because I do know that you will selectively implement and fabricate or alter the videos at will in favor of the officer's testimony to justify falsified attacks on the police when actually the victim has been handcuffed tightly, which was in the case of Jeff Page and also many others, especially black people who have been falsely accused of attacks or assault on police officers when it was actually the police who were assaulting those black people or people of color. I'd also like to expose the fact that numerous civil rights activists such as Tut Hays, eighty-one years old, taken down, disrespected by the LAPD yesterday at the police commissioners as well as Jeff Page two weeks ago, upstanding members of the community. We will not stand for this. The SARs and the increased police surveillance has got to stop. This is not a police state. We are not under martial law. We are still alive and we will object.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you, thank you. Ma'am, you're disrupting the meeting. Thank you. All right. Rabbi, please don't, no, no applauding or hissing or booing. Or, excuse me, sir? Anything else? Did you get it out of your system? All right. Okay, you're, now you're disrupting the meeting again. So we're going to ask you to step out of council chambers. Thank you. Thank you, sir. We're going to wait because you keep disrupting the meeting. We're going to ask you to leave. I've warned you four times, so, thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Thank you. Rabbi Cohen? Thanks for your patience, sir.
Hi, I'm Rabbi Ari Cohen. I'm Rabbi in residence of Ben the Ark, Jewish Partnership for Justice. Leviticus nineteen says, "Be holy, for I, the Lord your God, am holy." The commentaries in my tradition ask, "How can one be holy?" And they say the answer is, "Do not be a scoundrel within the bounds of the law. Do not make believe you are following the law and then thereby undermine the law." Police reform is not about the rhetoric of police reform, but it's about actual police reform. Do not use catchphrases which have quod on in the country and thereby, and there, and, and in any event, do not, not, do not reform the police. Body cameras, as be, as laid out in the meeting today, in the resolution that passed, do not further police reform. They're for the police. The accountability of the police is what is, is, is the first step in the community trusting their police officers. And the accountability is dependent on the reliability and the transparency and the, the camera legislation is, as passed today.
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate it, thank you. Susan Hiller, Hillier? Suzanne? Hello?
Good morning, Pro Tem Council and community. I'm a little befuddled after all of that. Excuse me. I do believe in freedom of speech and I do know the power of it. And I also know that there is good things we can do with our speech and there are bad things that we can do with our speech. My name is Susan Hillier and I manage the Wall Food Flowers and Farmers Market in the heart of the Los Angeles Flower District. If you're not aware, it is the largest flower district in the United States, something to be incredibly proud of. We, um, have worked on an economic development project with the Southern California Flower Market and the original Flower Market where we closed Wall Street. We have had some issues that we've addressed for the last eighteen months. It is not our objective to throw anybody under the bus or show a dark light on anyone. We contacted the Center for Civic Mediation so that we could mediate this problem. As of this morning, I was told that we would not be able to renew without working with them.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank, I thank, thank you, ma'am. Thank you. All right. Armando Herman?
Mr. Dwarf, I want to thank you for the presentation on, uh, public safety yesterday. You see, you got old equipment and you call yourself a reserve officer? You are full of shit, Englander. That's what you are.
You're not going to attack any personal?
This is general.
No, it's not for attacking personal individuals. Speak to matters under the purview of this body. You're going to give up your time.
I only got one minute, sir. If you can't take criticism, you can't tolerate it because I'm being unreasonable, then you should not be the chair because you are more offensive pretending to be a little policeman. And you want people to get in trouble, you little asshole? So get to the real objective. Stay on topic. Stay on topic. No, fuck you. Brandenburg versus Ohio, ACLU, look how they treat us for one fucking minute. Fuck you, that's my opinion.
All right, thank you, Armando. Eric? Eric, yes. You.
Yes, thank, uh, thank you. It's Eric Previn here in the public comment in protest because I really wanted to speak on the body cam, uh, item fifty because it was on a special meeting. And when you have twenty-four hour notice, this body is required to take, uh, to take comment. The problem with this deal is, I think the idea of body cam technology is a good one. We're not there yet because the city council needs to address the public's concern about who's going to be able to look at this footage before we move forward with such a historic and enormous deal. Also, this is a really big problem. And Mr. Price, I want you to sit forward. Mr. Harris Dawson, Mr. Bonin, Mr. Blumenfield. There are forty-four hundred tasers, those are the stun guns, in the truck marked body cam. That is bad. We, public scrutiny means you get a chance to see what's in the truck. Are the forty-four hundred tasers, new tasers in the truck? That's a big problem for the public because they are fifty thousand volts into an often mentally ill situation. That will not help us with Mr. Krikorian's lawsuits. That will not help us. That will hurt us. There's an important case in the Fourth District Court in the East Coast that's very critical of-
All right, thank you very much.
-constitutional violations involving this tool. So please, sir, you took donations from this group.
Thank you, your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you, Eric. Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you, Eric. Wayne?
So, not one, not two, seven separate Brown Act violations in this meeting today. Keep going with this. I don't know what, what, what needs to be done. In the LA Daily News, you have antiquated equipment that needs replacing. You have somebody walking in allegedly with something. Allegedly, I was allegedly threatening allegedly somebody. I found out why. And I want to thank a couple of the candidates in the Fifth District race, which you finished fifth in. That is, you are doing all of this falsely so that you can get $750,000 in emergency funds for upgrades to the first and third floor of this building. Miguel Santana told you, you did not have the money. So you are falsifying an emergency in an attempt to steal $775,000.
Thank you. Antonia?
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, the great and, and El Jefe, Donald Trump, this man is being attacked, violated and ridiculed. This man has balls. Everyone who is attacking him, mocking him, is just plain jealous of him. He has gotten death threats, death threats. And the wetback tried to grab the gun from one of his security officers and tried to kill Donald Trump. My God, have we gone that far in life to go and attack somebody who freely wants to restore this country? So again, deport these wetbacks and gangbangers. Deport them. Stop the gang stalking. And I do support body cameras for these wonderful LAPD officers. We must be objective, humane and dignified as a civilized society. God bless LAPD. There are good officers. I sleep on the streets. I am a victim, but I, I, I am respectful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right, that concludes our general public comment. Do we have other matters before us? Didn't have a card for you, sir. But come on, come on up and speak. I didn't have your card for whatever reason, but come on up.
Uh, yes, uh, we need more affordable housing. Today, we're living in a very serious time and there are many crises